Planning and zoning commission meeting, February 4th. Welcome. If you happen to be here for SD 1901, that is item D on the agenda, a public hearing to consider the request of Michael Watermark on behalf of Joshua Mandell for a site plan approval for Watermark MOP, a three-unit multiple occupancy project. The project's located on the west side of South Mobile Street, north of Denton Lane. That item has been pulled from the agenda, so if you are here for that, you can certainly check with Emily in the future and find out when or if that will come back to us. We will have the minutes for both meetings at the, for January and February, at the March meeting commissioners. Which brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is ZC 1901. That's carried over from our last meeting. Public hearing to consider the request of Dan Blackburn on behalf of the Hollises. And the Calles, this is a rezoning from R2 to R3 on Morphe Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. We had this at our last meeting that was tabled. This is rezoning of 4.3 acres of property that is currently zone R2. The requested rezoning is to R3, which is high-density, single-residential district. It is located between Morphe Avenue and Fairhope Avenue. Staff analyzed this request and did want to mention that it does abut R3 property that is to the west. And so it is abutting existing R3 property. We went through our typical review process and also the criteria, and we do recommend approval. Do you have to answer any questions?
We had the public hearing on this last.
That's correct.
Right? And our legal advisor said, basically, look at this as if there is not a lawsuit. Just look at it as if it stands on its own for anybody. There wasn't. I'm not putting words in your mouth, am I? Yeah? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public hearing was held last month. However, I do have some names of some people that would like to speak to this, so I'd much rather open it up and hear from people and get all the information out that we need. First person's name on our list is Dan Blackburn, yes, sir.
Good evening. The only thing I wanted to comment on was to give you a quick history of how we got from 1999 to today. And then to touch on the issue of the objection that was raised by at least one member of the Faust family at last month's meeting. Y'all know that this case has been tied up in litigation since 2014, and has been deposition testimony, and more recently, there's been trial testimony. And in that trial testimony, what has come out has been a history going back to 1999, when Bill Calles, now deceased, came to the city and said, "I'd like y'all to rezone my property from R1 to R2, so that I can build a subdivision and give lots to my children." The city said in 1999, "No problem." Went to the planning commission. Planning commission recommended rezoning. Council followed suit and approved the rezoning. And then the subdivision was built. But guess what? The subdivision was built in part with labor furnished by the city of Fairhope. That same trial testimony that I mentioned involved members of the Fairhope Public Works Department coming out and assisting with the construction of the subdivision, laying the street, and installing water, sewer, gas, and electricity. After the subdivision was complete, Mike and Leslie Hollis built their house there. They occupied that place as their primary residence from 1999 until approximately two years ago. It's been rented ever since. And this problem came to a head back in 2014, when the elder Ms. Calles, who is now in her mid-80s, needed to sell the property. And, of course, the title work came back, and it surfaced that this had never been to a planning commission, and therefore, there was no public right-of-way access of record to the property, despite what the city had told Mr. Calles now almost 20 years ago. So in negotiations with Matt, we think we're well on our way to a resolution. And as part of the litigation process, I wanted to let y'all know something that may not have come out up until now. The attorney representing the Faust family came to me last June and said, "Hey, I got a great idea. Why don't I get the Fausts to support y'all's request for rezoning from R2 to R3, and in return, we will support y'all's request for increased density? As long as any subdivision built on the property would have access from Morphe rather than Fairhope Avenue?" I said, "Great." Put it in writing. So they did.
And this is the letter that we received from Tommy Faust Jr.
Thanks, sir.
In response to my request for written confirmation about access from Morphe.
So I just wanted to make the commission aware that not only did we consider this issue with the Faust family to be worked out, we thought we had it put to rest. I don't know if there are any members of the family here tonight to talk about this or not, but I wanted to set the record straight that this was a deal that had been made as part of the litigation and thought y'all should be aware of it. And I think Matt is going to have some further comments to make. I'll let him touch on those.
My comments are very brief. I'm Matt McDonald, represent the city of Fairhope in the litigation that Dan referenced. In the letter that Dan provided you from Mr. Faust, the Faust, on behalf of the Faust family, one of the points of the letter was that they, their support for, in essence, a rezoning and ultimately a subdivision was premised upon the access to that area being from Morphe Avenue. And I've given each of you a copy of those conditions, which can be made a part of your recommendation to the city council for rezoning, if you so choose, that the applicant, I'm authorized to say, the applicant has agreed to these conditions, which confirm that act-
These are-
Yes, Lee. These are before you. And this will spell out that, once the subdivision is, once there's a subdivision created, and once it is developed, that the lots, which we're calling the Calles division, will be accessed from Morphe. The Faust division, which is nearer to Fairhope Avenue and has Beecher Street as an access, will use the Fairhope side to access. So that should resolve issues relating to access that the Fausts were concerned about. The applicant has agreed to it. Therefore, that can be made a condition of any kind of recommendation you send on to the council. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. I think it's pretty straightforward, though.
Mr. Turner, may I address the-
Yes, sir.
-the commission? So, thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And I believe that I was the one that asked to table this at the last meeting that started that discussion. My primary concern was that, over the, if you look at the plat, there's the one additional lot that was added to be reconsidered for zoning, and that's the lot that on the, on the more surveying plat, you see, that's the southeast corner of Beecher Street. That'd be Doris Calle's lot. I just wasn't aware that there had been talks about that lot, and I didn't want that to foul any negotiations up. And we have received clarification that the city is okay with that. And I believe that the Calles family, Mr. Blackburn, is okay with that. So my reason for wanting to table that was to make sure that we didn't, you know, approve something that was going to cause, you know, complications in the litigation. And I just, I'm here to say that that's not going to. And that I believe, I'm just one council member, but I believe that I could speak for the council, that we are okay with the rezoning. I mean, it's a recommendation to the council, anyway, but I believe that we are okay with that. I don't think we have any reservations for that. But I do want to say for the record that if rezoned R3, it'll still be subjected to all of the rules and regulations that go along with R3. There was, you know, there's not a promise made to whether you can get 10 or 15 or 30 lots in there. It's whatever you can get out of R3, subject to the rules and regulations, the subdivision rules and regulations, engineering and whatnot.
Correct. All right. I might have two more names. Leslie Hollis, would you wish to speak to this?
I'm going to take that.
Okay. And Kelly Calles.
Kelly Calles.
Okay. Mary Wilson, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you have anything? You okay with everything going on?
No. I'm lying in certain ways, and I have the comments I got.
Okay. In that case, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion and turn this over to the commissioners. Commissioners, are there any questions, concerns?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman. You have something?
No. Just kidding. I have a concern, in that, you know, we had a lot of people here to speak at the last meeting, who were, we talked about connectivity and that being important, and they opposed connection to a street and to their subdivision. And we were telling them why that had to happen, because we believe in connectivity. And not "we believe," but that's part of our conference agreement, and that's something the city is trying to do. And so I, you know, excuse me.
We took a lot of time to explain to people that we had to have connectivity in our subdivisions at our last meeting, even though there were lots of people opposed to it and didn't want to be connected to. And so I guess what I want to understand is, you know, are we consistent with that? Or, when we have, you know, kind of a Hatfield and McCoy situation, it kind of feels like we're being backed into a corner because of this litigation, and it's not consistent with what we just told some very unhappy people, you know, had to be at the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond.
Yes, sir.
And yes, the interconnectivity is very important, and when you look in planning, we have had a lot of people who have expressed concern over the years about connectivity. And most of those cases, there is a sign that says "Future Street."
Mm-hmm.
I will tell you, when, in looking at this rezoning, we go visit all the sites, and we look at them ourselves, we put our eyes on them, and the street of Beecher Street is, it's very, very narrow. It's really not a, it's not a public street first. It's more, I believe it belongs to a single-tax colony. So it's not a public right-of-way that the city owns. But also, it's, in my mind, inadequate for future development on that street. And from a planning perspective, if you have access to Morphe with a, you know, a typical street designed to our standards of the subdivision regulations, I think that's a better alternative than we have.
So it's not a city right-of-way?
It's not.
Okay.
But in that same light, though, I would limit access to vehicular access and allow pedestrian access to go. If we've got schoolkids that live in the new subdivision, and they're trying to walk to the intermediate school, I think it's pretty petty if we're not allowing pedestrian access between the two places.
That's a good point.
Well, and I agree with that. However, since it's not a city right-of-way or a public right-of-way, I don't know if we have the authority to say, "You can cross this property, that property." Again, this property is not, is not a city right-of-way per the typical ones you would find throughout the city, where the city maintains it and owns it. We don't maintain it or own this right-of-way. So allowing somebody to cross or encouraging somebody to cross onto technically, I suppose, private property, I'm not sure we have that.
So what happens to the property that's on the Calle side, that's part of the single-tax property of the right-of-way?
What's the Calle side?
The Calles. The side that's on Morphe, that right-of-way that's owned by the single-tax extends into that.
It stops at the property line, doesn't it?
Well, what I'm looking at doesn't seem to be-
It looks like it cuts off their access to that right-of-way. And it said something about that in one of these letters, that they would have to access from Morphe as well. Did I interpret that correctly?
The one, the lot, the one lot?
Yeah, the one that bumps that.
Right.
Does it include some subdivision, or will it have access?
Yes. And what Mr. McDonald said, if it's included in the subdivision, it will have access to Morphe. So any future development would account for that lot being there.
That's going to be a funny little, that'll be one of those Fairhope stories, like the jog on Fairhope Avenue because of the feud.
I think it's important to reiterate what Wayne is referring to, and the fact that this new subdivision will have a street that will meet all the standards required by the city of Fairhope, and certainly Beecher Street doesn't. And the thought that you could consider that continuity, connectivity, it just isn't. Now, maybe one day, the people that live in that street may decide they want to get a, they would rather have a sure enough street in there. But the issue right at the moment is, first, it's a private drive. Second, it's, who's going to, if you wanted to make it a street that met the specification of the city, who's going to pay for it? Obviously, the residents that live there are satisfied with what they've got.
Well, the other issue is, they wouldn't want it to be, because if you took the additional width in the sidewalks, it would be all the way up-
Mm-hmm.
-through their yards and into their bushes right by the houses. They'd have about two feet between a few of the houses and the sidewalks, which-
But I think, I think that's important in terms of your question, as it relates to, we told them one thing, and it seems that we're doing something else.
That was my concern.
But that certainly would be a good explanation for why it is the way it is.
Not a city street.
That's right.
Do we have a lot more, well, that can be for another time. Are there, do we have a ballpark of how many instances like this that there are of streets that might look like streets, but are really single-tax colony?
There's a lot of private little streets, but I don't know if they're single tax.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a number, but I will tell you, that's very, very common. I mean, during my career, you see a lot of these. Because a city develops over time. And, you know, now we have this very formal process, but you had a time, many years ago, you didn't have a formal process to go through, and you have all kind of little trails and what's known to be streets that really aren't, that houses front and so forth. So it's not uncommon.
Like Morphe Avenue on the other, on the east side of Greeno is a prescriptive right-of-way. It's not a street.
Right.
Okay.
You know, that's one of the major thoroughfares, and you see that all the time.
Right. But to answer your question, we don't have a number, we don't, we've not identified all these streets.
So Wayne, I'm looking at the parcel here. It looks like the Beecher Street quote-unquote nonexistent right-of-way extends into the property that's going to be subdivided on Morphe. Is that property that gets vacated? Is that property that what?
That's, so, and Matt, if I'm wrong, please correct me. I think what you have here, you have a, the northern part of Beecher Street is owned by the single-tax. The southern part, which is on the subject property, is actually right-of-way that has been dedicated to the city. And a future development would have to have that vacation as part of that development to vacate that right-of-way. Unless they wanted to have a, have a little, you know, little island there with the street coming down to Morphe. It depends on what their design objectives are. What's that?
A little section of connectivity.
Right. Right. So it all depends on what the design objectives are when they develop it. They could keep it, they could do away with it, or ask for it to be vacated.
But all of that property is owned by the single-tax, the north and south of the colony. That's okay. And that's what the lawsuit is about.
Well, yes, it's owned, all the property's owned by the single-tax, with the exception that the north portion of Beecher Street is not leased. The rest of it is leased, and the 99-year leases, and there's no question where the single-tax pays the $8 a year major rent, or, excuse me, major property taxes-
Got you.
-to the county, and that land is not leased.
Right.
You know, at this point, once this lawsuit is settled, you know, we have plans to, you know, not no plans, but we would certainly like to, you know, lease it, and they form some kind of an owners' association or something like that. We, the single-tax wearing that hat, try not to have unleased land. You know, we try to have everything under a lease possible.
Understood, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Listen, by the way, for anybody in the audience with zoning, the planning and zoning commission simply makes a recommendation to the city council, as Mr. Burrell already mentioned, and their vote will win the day regardless of what our recommendation is.
As referenced, case ZC 19.01, Hollis-Calles property, I would make a motion to recommend to the city council approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I want a second, subject to the conditions that the attorney had mentioned, and these-
I accept that.
Could you amend that motion to include those conditions?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, what was it?
Okay. So just for clarity-
It just allows you access to your lot there until such time, it allows you access to your lot on Beecher Street until such time the subdivision commences, and then you would have to enter from Morphe. So it's kind of protecting your right to get to your property for time being. Is that correct, Matt?
That's correct.
Yes.
So Emily, you got it. This is subject to, do you need this for the record? Okay. So the motion is to recommend to the city council to rezone the land from R2 to R3, subject to this document that is in our record. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion at this time?
And this right-of-way has nothing to do with any of it?
No, it's part of the conditions, right? The access from Morphe.
Well, no, that doesn't, it doesn't address right-of-ways or access, other than what exists now, and then what would happen after the commence, the development of the property.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nay. So the motion passes, or the motion to recommend rezoning is to, six to one. Got that, Emily? All right. Next item on the agenda is also a holdover from last month's meeting. This is a request to rezone some property from M1 Light Industrial to B2 General Business District in the Nichols Avenue and Professional Park Drive industrial area.
Thank you. This is, again, a rezoning of a property that came up at the last planning commission meeting. It's owned by the Evans Family Trust, and it's located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Nichols Avenue and Professional Park Drive. They're requesting a rezoning from M1 Light Industrial to B2 General Business District. And there was discussion that came up out of the meeting the last time with regards to trying to preserve our M1 industrial zoning properties. So we had a meeting on the, I believe it was the 16th, with the industrial board, and they were very, very supportive of maintaining that M1 zoning designation, but they were amenable to allowing restaurant-bar use within the M1 zoning district by right. So that would be adjusting our zoning table. And so what there, what was discussed is tabling this application for, till that ordinance could be revised to include a restaurant-bar use. We also had a meeting with Mr. Evans of the Evans Family Trust, and he was amenable at that time. He is not here tonight, but that's kind of where it stood. So we're-
Okay. So this will be-
So the city council is going to amend?
The, well, yes, the city council will.
Yes, sir. What, at the, at the industrial development board meeting, what we discussed is a potential amendment to the zoning ordinance, and most likely, you'll be seeing that at your next meeting or a subsequent meeting for a recommendation to amend the zoning ordinance to allow a restaurant use under various conditions in the M1 district. And that would have to be, you know, come to the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council. The city council will make the decision on to amend the ordinance or not.
What are you referring to in terms of various conditions? I mean, is it going to be specific to where someone can actually understand that if they do A, B, and C, they will be approved?
I believe so. One of the, you know, I mean, when you talk about restaurants, there's various types of restaurants, and some of those are more conducive in certain locations than others. That's something that we'll explore when we start developing this amendment. But I would anticipate there'd be some locational criteria and some things like that.
I had a couple of comments on that. Well, oh, I'm sorry. I was also going to say that the way this is written, because we got kind of stuck between the industrial board meeting and our meeting with the client, so it's written up as denial because that was the original discussion with the industrial board. But after all that discussion, we are at the point of table.
And what they happened, wished to do was just to table it until this amendment, potential amendment, was worked out to avoid having to, because basically, if you deny it, then they can't reapply for a year, and you got to, you know, some other issues like that. So I think what they were willing, were asking to just table it, and they'll just, you know, find out what happens during that process with the amendment, and then take it up again.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the commission? Again, once again, I asked to table this as well, just being a member of the industrial development board, and I know that they covet that M1, but we're trying to be amenable to the applicant, and we don't really see an issue there, but we don't want to just give up all of our M1 land. And so we came up with the idea that restaurants should be allowed in M1. And if you think about it, the land around the airport is M1, and you probably haven't been to many airports where they didn't have restaurants at an airport. Under the current zoning laws, you can't even put a restaurant at the airport. So if we were to have a nice FBO, and somebody wanted to put a restaurant in there, you can't do it. So, you know, we can probably lick two birds with one stone here, and rather than making an exception or grant of variance, we felt that we needed to look at our zoning ordinances and make them make more sense. And as Wayne said, we're going to work on those conditions, because there's probably going to be some times at which it doesn't make sense. You know, currently, if you look at Warehouse Coffee, there's a restaurant that's zone, it's in an M1 zoning, but the reason it's allowed is because it's a medical overlay district. So there was an exception there. Otherwise, it would not even be allowed where it's at that and the, and the place next to it as well. So that's why we felt it'd be best to address our zoning ordinance. It needs a little bit of cleaning up to make better sense of it, rather than rezoning, rezoning M1 to B2. Because if you keep doing that, then when you're here five years from now, they'll go, "Well, it's, there's B2 next to it. There's B2, B2, B2." Which is probably what happened on that corner parcel where the strip mall is, is that was M1, and somebody said, "Well, it makes sense to be B2." Now we're saying, "Well, there's B2 to the west." Of course there is.
Yeah.
But it was M1. And so is the business and professional offices that are to the east of that. That's in M1, but it's being used as B2. But we just don't have any M1, and that's the industrial development boards. Nobody's willing to rezone M1.
Good point.
That's a good point. Although we just did rezone M1 down the road from there.
Yeah, we did just add some M1 down the, on that road.
So it can happen.
And I agree that Nichols Market seems way more appropriate not being M1, on Greeno, fronting on Greeno Road. I don't think we want M1 as the front door, but it does need a place. Just to, towards the rezoning, it seems like the restaurants we're talking about, and you know, we could talk about the brewery as a cannery, well, it's, you know, it's a brewery. That's how people go there. But it seems like instead of just opening the door to all restaurants in M1, if there's a way to capture the particular kind of industrial restaurant that's a farm-to-table or a, you know, coffee-making and restaurant, and maybe clarify the accessory, you know, the mixed, that mixed-use idea, that would be great. And just one more little thing, the agricultural part. Hydroponics or like mushroom cultivation, there's lots of agriculture that is not open field, it's more like manufacturing, and it's more industrial.
Right.
And if there's a way to pull that in-
Yeah, thank you. Will you help with that?
Sure.
Seriously.
No, I'd be happy to. I'm interested in-
And Rebecca, if I understand you correctly, what you want to do is tie in some sort of production component to the restaurant?
Yes. So it's not just-
Not open-ended, yeah.
Yeah.
I got you.
Well, but you have to be careful when you put those conditions, because if you put a restaurant at the airport, for instance, where it might make sense, you don't want to impose that they have to be producing, you know, food there.
But the airport may be a, well, the level of traffic right now at the airport is probably not-
It needs a little work.
But it may be a special case.
That's what, yeah.
Well, let me see, this, this will clean up a lot on the west side of Nichols as well, because not this staff, but prior, it was considered that with regressive zoning, you could have a restaurant in M1. And so the, those building permits were given, and the city was grasping at straws to try to rationalize how that could be done, and came up with the overlay district. So it'll be much neater on both sides. I can guarantee you, it'll be much neater on both sides of Nichols to get this approved and be a lot more comfortable, you know, on what's there as well. So this really does make a lot of sense. And Jack, I appreciate your being here last month and keeping your eye on the M1, because, you know, I hadn't really thought of that, and it really makes a lot of sense to protect-
you know, I hadn't really thought of that, and it really makes a lot of sense to protect, to protect that even if we, you know, want to allow a restaurant to not give it up. Because, you know, when you rezone, you're rezoning forever, so you made some good points, sir, and I appreciate that. Maybe you should stay on, you know.
This is my last month.
Forever. All right, moving right along.
Toughest job in the city.
Hey, the next, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
As far as, like, when you mentioned warehouse, that they produce coffee, and they produce a coffee grinding bean.
It's a separate business. There's a separate business. So there's no way you can do one with the other.
Yeah, you know, the warehouse is interesting because that happened before my time here, but basically, they do produce, I guess, some coffee, but you gotta look at what, what the primary use of it is. The primary, the majority of use there is a restaurant.
But they're separate businesses.
But the same with the, I mean, if you look at the definition of accessory use as being something that doesn't add odors or congestion, well, then the brewery is not really an accessory use. I mean, there's definitely some traffic. You know, they're, they're both in that.
Right.
Another world.
Yeah, the brewery's a different story because they're doing both, where the warehouse, it's separate businesses and separate suites. So it's just a clean, it'll clean everything up tremendously. All right, moving right along, we have the.
Do we need a motion to table it?
Yeah.
Do we?
Yes. I, I would say so.
Should we?
The applicant has agreed to further continuance for sufficient time for the city council to take up the rezoning to allow restaurants in some fashion within the M1 district. I think that disposition should be reflected in the record, and probably should be by motion.
Do we, do we need to make a motion with a finite time, or can we be indefinite?
A finite time would be better.
Let's give ourselves time to say, let's say 90 days then. I'll make a motion that we table this for no more than, our meetings, let's use meetings.
Okay. I don't think we can do it in 90 days, only because it'll have to be advertised for the planning commission, which will have to be, first it's gotta be written, then it'll have to be advertised, and we've, it may not make the March meeting.
Right.
For planning commission.
April would be 60, but then May.
I'll just say 120, just to.
Or, or before, if it's adopted. I mean, if, can we, can we tie up the amendment, if the amendment's adopted before that?
We could set it out. Cautious date, but if it gets done faster, then we could get, we could do it faster.
Yeah, I would've thought March, April, May. I'm sor, yeah, I'm sorry. March, April, May.
It all depends on the newspaper and legal ads.
I think.
I just don't want to.
I think May would be fine. I mean, I think we'll have it, it would, I, I feel pretty sure we'll have it on next, next month's agenda for sure, but that's why I don't want to get crossways with the legal ads.
I'm not sure when the meeting is made. Do we need to say 100 days?
You have an answer? I mean.
Just call it the May meeting.
Okay, I want to, I would make the motion to table this until the May meeting.
I have a motion. That's fine, because we can always retable it then.
And not tie it to the planning commission and not tie it to the city council adopting it. I mean, I know we can make it.
No, just to table, we're just tabling the vote on this until the May meeting.
I have a motion to table this to the May meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any, any, let's put the second down there with, well, let's put it with Charles Johnson, so he'll show up in the minutes. And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, on to our green space standards amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something we've worked on for a while here, just wanted to, basically, you know, we've, we've dealt with the green space issues for a, a couple, at least in my time, a couple of years here, trying to make sure that there's adequate amount of green space, and also that it's located properly, and also that it's, it's the proper kind of open space. And so, if you've seen a memo, we laid out basically three, three primary goals we had in drafting these amendments to, to the green space. And the first one was to ensure that the amount was adequate and, and that met the needs of the neighborhood. The second goal was to ensure that the green space in the proper context, that in a suburban character-type green space, you have green space that meets that suburban type of development. In the, in the more urban areas, you have the green space that meets more urban type, and also in the villa centers, just trying to make sure that it's all in context and it's all appropriate with, with the, the development that may be surrounding it. And the third thing is, is that we want the green space to be integrated into the design of the neighborhood. You know, green space can be an asset. If it's integrated and done well, it can really increase, I believe, property values, at the same time serving a, a, a purpose of recreation and those kind of things for the neighborhood. So with that, and you'll see in, in the strike through the line version we've set out, we've required green space based on density, and basically it's, it's rural, urban, some suburban, urban, and then sort of the villa center type densities that you would see. And also we have it for MOPs as well. Also included, we did, after some discussions from some of our previous meetings, we did allow some of the drainage features, such as a pond or a lake, to be counted towards that. One of the things we want to make very, very clear is that basically it had, it is, that it must be integrated into the design of the open space. I think I may have a picture here, I want to see if I have it.
Do it have some kind of amenities with it?
Yeah, it, it's surrounded by some kind of amenity, and I don't know if I have a picture in this presentation here.
Used for fishing or used for.
Exactly. And it had, and a lot of the ones that you'll see is they have a, a, a area, a large, a green area, for example, and then they have trails or sidewalks that emanate out from that going around the lake. So, so it was a clear integration of open space and the lake. And so that's something that I thought was very, very important, that we make sure we make that very, very clear. But also, I, I want to show you this too. You know, basically, the, when you talk about context, open space, you have, in some, some of the more urbanism, new urbanism type components, you have something that's called the rural-to-urban transect, and if you look on the screen, you'll see T1 to, to T6, these are just kind of like districts that have been identified, and basically T1 is a very rural area, and T6 is more of a downtown, like a mobile or Birmingham. And this is just a way to keep things in context from the standpoint of streets, from setbacks, from frontages. For example, in downtown Fairup, you have, you have no setbacks, and you have the buildings fronting directly onto the street for, to engage the public and have, and create a, what's, and activate the street is what they call it. People are coming and going. Then out there in the rural areas, you have large lot developments that are rural, which, you know, and you have certain roads that meet that, that, that provide that. You wouldn't want to have a urban street in a rural area, for example, and so forth. And so along those same lines, we, you do have green space that meets those kind of same purposes. You don't want to have a square in the middle of a rural, rural subdivision, or a green. And so what we've tried to do is, is keep that context of that type in our separate, in our amendment we've proposed here. And so if you, if you look to the last few pages, we do have the category of open space, we have the type, description, location, size, recommendation, and then an image showing basically what this should look like, and you, and it will all be included in this amendment. And just want to show you a couple of examples of a green. A green is something that's more of a suburban character to the urban character. Many times the street front it, that's very important, that this, that the green is sort of determined and, and shaped by streets or by landscaping and all. In this particular screen, on, image on the screen here, you have homes that are facing the green. That also provides what's called casual, casual surveillance, and there's a whole planning thought called crime prevention through environmental design, and casual surveillance is one of those things that can provide what's called eyes on the street. People can see what's going on there, so it's a safer place for your children to play. It's not behind buildings, you can see it, it's very visible by passing traffic and people coming into their homes and so forth. So that's an example of a green. In this case, what we recommend it be between a quarter to three acres, and so you might have a development that might have multiple greens throughout it, and we would like for those to be integrated into the design of the neighborhood to be an asset. And there's some other examples of some greens. You can see they come in many different forms, many different densities that can surround the greens. Here's another one, and typically, as you see, the homes front it, there's landscaping in some cases, there may be seating out there, there's a large area for passive-type recreation. Another example of another shape of green, they can come, and like I said, it's not just linear squares, it can be various sizes, and again, the image you see here, you see that there is sidewalks, there's landscaping, there's areas that are for open, passive, open recreation, and then also there's an architectural feature in the center to provide some, you know, aesthetic element to it. Again, same, same thing again. Again, you see streets and you see trees that sort of kind of define it. Also, you know, we have, we've talked about greenways a lot, we have, we've seen a lot of greenways, some are five feet wide. I, I, I don't believe that's considered what I would consider a greenway. And in here, you'll see they have to be at least 30 feet wide to be considered a greenway or a trail. And the image you see here is, you see again, there's a trail going through it, it's, it's very identifiable, it's very defined, 30 foot wide, minimum three acres for the greenway. As you get more into the urban setting, you get into the plazas, this is something like we see downtown, we see right across the street, and in the new development over there, it's a plaza for sitting. This, this is typically a private space that's for patrons of the restaurants or adjoining property, but in, there's some cases, the city may provide a seating area at a corner or something of that nature. Again, a courtyard, similar, yes, maybe a single-use type courtyard you'll find. Plazas typically, you have multiple uses surrounding it. This is a courtyard, typically a single-use type courtyard that you would find to be a, an element of outdoor dining, outdoor seating for a particular development. Again, a park, parks typically have, you know, basketball courts and more of active recreation type uses there. Again, located, you know, in a place that's accessible to the whole neighborhood and the surrounding residents. And so that's, that's our, our presentation. We've tried to consider all the different elements, and as an aid, we will be, we will be developing an open space guide to, to give to the designers and engineers as they come forward with examples and recommendations. This will just, just aid them in their design and development of open space. Again, we feel it, feel like it's very important, providing open spaces to provide, it's not really meeting the objectives, I believe, the planning commission and the city has. We want to make sure that it's, it's usable space, it's well-integrated, and it's an asset to the community, and will serve its intended purposes. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Wayne. Do y'all have questions now, or would you like to wait till after the public hearing? And let's, let's go ahead and do the public.
Overall target percentage of green space within its city limits, taking it above the subdivision level and bring it to the citywide level, it would be good perhaps to consider a target of perhaps 20% green space overall for the city as a whole, so that urbanization doesn't drive it below that level sometime in the future without thinking through carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, anybody else wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners to discuss this. Now, this goes in the subdivision reg, so this will not go to the city council, correct?
That's, that's correct. Mr. Chairman, can I just address real quick? And I think that's a great idea to have a target for open space. You know, the city works very hard to provide adequate recreational facilities for our residents here. One thing, as we get further down the road and looking at these things, if we do set targets, one thing that I would recommend that we look at is making an amendment to this. Many times you might, if the city wants to provide green space, we can do some things, maybe like a fee in lieu of providing open space for a private developer, if it's located near a city green space. That way, that, that fee can help offset the cost of providing open space from the public standpoint. That's not for this, not for tonight, but just down the road as we think about this, and I think that's, that's done in some cases, and it does allow a funding mechanism. Of course, you know, funding's always an issue when you start looking at green space and, and those kind of things, because it's not only purchasing green space, but it's also maintaining green space.
Right.
And it takes, there are, there are reoccurring costs you have when you have to mow the grass and keep it up and those kind of things. So just as, if we do look at targets, and we do look at areas to provide green space, for some of those neighborhoods that may be adjoining that public green space that the city may provide at some point in time, I would think it'd be appropriate to look at maybe some fee in lieu of providing it on private property. Just, just some thoughts for consideration later on.
Well, in opening Pandora's box, some municipalities will allow that rather than green space in subdivisions, and try to put parks in certain areas within walking distance of all of those subdivisions to have a really large usable park rather than everything chopped up. Wayne, I think y'all did a great job on this, though. What I like about it is it addresses R1, which we've never addressed before. It addresses MOPs, which, counterintuitively, we had never really addressed before, and I really like the way the retention y'all allow with the caveat, because one thing that I've seen over the years is places where the retention ponds have a walkway go around them, and a gazebo or a dock at them that people are fishing and using are typically taken care of, whether they're in the back of a subdivision with the privacy fence blocking them off. It's pretty much out of sight, out of mind, and I really like that that was addressed in the way it was. One question that I have is, on one of the photos, this is my only question, I think y'all did a bang-up job on this. On one of the photos, this one right here on the left, where you show the tennis courts. We've had a number of subdivisions come in where they have tennis courts, swimming pools, et cetera. If they have a community hall there, is that considered green space? Like if they had a tennis court with, say, you know, gazebo next to it, or basketball courts inside, in, in some type of a, you know, large, you know, neighborhood type of a situation? Would it be considered green space if they had, you know, indoor tennis?
Right.
Indoor basketball, or a community hall where they could go, you know, play, you know, the bingo and poker and stuff?
Right. That's, that's a great question. We did not, we didn't address the, you know, we, we had considered, I know we had a discussion before, we had, we had considered saying that it's gotta be, so much has gotta be impervious, and if you had like an, like an indoor facility or something like that, that would go against the impervious. I think we, we kind of gravitated away from that, just because it got very, very complicated, and that would limit maybe some potentially good uses. So to answer your question, I think we would likely credit that. Now, that'd be a case-by-case basis, and I think this gives a lot of latitude to the planning commission to make those judgment calls on a case-by-case basis, whether that's appropriate or not appropriate. From the size perspective, from the, those kind of things, I think that it, that's, that's something we'd handle on a case-by-case basis. I mean, obviously, if you have a little community hall and you have a large area of open space, I think that, that is appropriate, because I know a lot of communities have events and so forth, and I think that's a good use of, of, of community property. So we did not want to limit, put a definitive limit on that. I do think it's a case-by-case basis. If you had two acres of open space and you had a building that covered an acre and a half of that open space with an impervious, I think that would draw concern. But we, but instead of getting into all those little nuances of that, we, we kind of steered away from that and recommend we take it on a case-by-case basis.
Perfect.
Well, but you've got to be consistent in some form or fashion. I mean, that's where we always get in a, get ourselves in a crack.
Yeah, I would, I would be very wary of buildings being considered green space. I think, you know, impervious surfaces being considered green space when you're in an urban, when I read this, I think it's really useful, and I, I think it's great work, and it gives a lot of guidance to developers, and when you're in an urban setting, it's open space, it's not green, you know, for its landscape, hardscape. I could see how, when you get in a larger, less dense area and you had a playground, that some part of it might be impervious, but that's really, or the sidewalk through the preserve might be impervious, but it, it seems kind of intuitive that you go to more and more green, the less dense you are. And I, I don't know, I think that's, it seems like if you have enough space to have a large, several, multi-acre green space, and there's a 1,500 square foot building, you just subtract that from the area.
Right, and, and you're right. If you have that much space, I mean, I'm thinking about Rock Creek and, and some places like that, you, you have a lot of acreage, and you have a lot of open space that you have to kind of have excess. I, I don't think we would come across that. If, if we would, it'd be a rare occurrence, but I, I, so I don't think that's gonna be a big issue, but if we need to address it, we certainly will. We don't have any problem addressing that at all.
Well, it's, I mean, nothing in here says building, so I think you're, I mean, it seems like it's addressed as long as we're consistent, like you said.
Mr. Chairman, if this is adopted tonight, we will, we want, we want to wait to the next application cycle, because there's some that's already been applied, so it'll, it'll, this will go to the next application cycle before it's, it's put into effect. Just to make sure we're clear, because we have some that's already been submitted that are being reviewed currently.
I have a question, I don't know how this group's in, but as far as where we're planning for the future, going south and going east, what plans do we have for, like Mr. Golding going south and going east, what plans do we have for, like Mr. Gober said, as far as plans of parks that we have going in the developments that aren't, that are out in our nose? Do we have a protection of, you know, of making natural parks, regardless of what type they are? Do we have something?
Yeah, good question. We have some limited guidance right now in our conference of plan, we currently have. It doesn't provide a, I mean, very, I mean, we have some recommendations. I believe you'll find, as we go through the planning process with a new conference of plan, that that will be a part of that plan, is to identify. Again, I would envision us having targets for how much open space we want to have in certain areas, and maybe even have the city in certain areas divided up and try to target areas like that. Again, funding's always an issue with those kind of things, but I would envision that we would look at that and start identifying types of open space, that maybe public open space. I know when you go to places like Madison and Huntsville and places like that, they have a lot of their little river corridors they have, that's in part of an open, public open space, a trail network, for example. And even providing playground, recreational activities for areas of that, in that vicinity of the city or the county. I think that's something we will certainly do. But again, that's more of a broader citywide planning effort, and I think you'll see that as we move forward with the planning process.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're setting aside for that growth. It's the only way we can grow is in those directions that, you know, we have the ballpark set up for, you know, the growth, and we have, you know, the trails and the green space, not just development growth, but citywide planning.
Public.
Right. That's accessible and walkable to the neighborhoods. You know, if you look at the very successful cities around the country, and you go places and you say, well, this feels good here, and you start noticing why it feels good here, you'll see a lot of things that are important. I mean, even downtown, you find a place downtown that's pedestrian-friendly, that has a good relationship to the street with the buildings. And if you look at Fairhope, we've got a lot of those things here that are some of those things that you notice other places. But also, when it comes to recreation space and open space, that's value to the city, to the city as far as providing services to people, but also, it's value to property and property values, because if you're, you know, there's places, if you're within, you know, we go downtown, I mean, to the Bayfront Park, when you're close to that Bayfront Park, you know, being a realtor, that those values are higher, because you do have access to that, to that park. And so, I think that there's a component where we're providing services, but there's also a component where we're providing value.
Problem with, problem with the future, seems to me, is the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope and the unincorporated areas of the county, in terms of planning for the future. I mean, how many times do we run into the same scenario? Take me in as this, or I'm not coming in. So, in terms of...
And I think of like, you know, all of the development that's going in on 104, and, you know, we're going to have neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, where you've got a school over there, and I already am thinking, okay, we need a football stadium, we need a baseball park, we need walking trails, we need something that's going to correlate that and kind of bring it into where we have that central node.
Right. Well, and bear in mind, the city is currently buying property now, so we are meeting the needs we have for that. We're buying property now for...
We're negotiating for 40 acres of recreational property right now.
But when you talk about 10 to 15 to 20 years from now, you're right.
There'll be more.
It's hard to plan for that, so you have to work, in my opinion, you've got to work very closely with the county, because a lot of these areas are in the county, and so you build a relationship with the county and try to find ways...
While knowing that we're purchasing that, because we're looking towards the future, because I feel like, oh my gosh, we're going to have, they, all we see is neighborhoods, you know?
Yeah.
Right. And so, right. So, you know, I think when you start planning long-term, 10, 20 years, it's areas that are not in the city yet, but will be. And so, I think you have to partner with the people, with the county and other entities that, to make sure that your plan is sufficient, and it's workable and doable. Long-range planning is very difficult. It's very visionary, so, you know, there's a lot of things that happen between now and that, and that coming into effect. But I think when you put the proper protocols in place, you know, difficulty with planning a city or a county is that it happens incrementally. If I own 500 acres, I'm a developer, I can go develop it how I want it, when I want it, and to what scale I want, that I can get approved, obviously, but I control all those pieces to it. When you're, for a city, we have to put plans in place, and they're effectuated incrementally as development comes along. So, it makes it a little more difficult, and it's not really noticeable at one time. But if you look back 10 years from now, you'll see some of the things that we put in place, and it'll start taking shape. It just takes a lot longer, because we don't control the process. The private side, private sector controls that process of how it's, you know, we control how it's developed and in what context, but they have to be the ones to go and develop it and make it marketable. And so, it makes it very hard, you know, to really see a difference, and that's the, that's some people don't, what are y'all doing? You aren't doing anything. What takes time? And I think 10 years from now, you'll go back and say, wow, that was pretty, pretty good. We did a good job with that. So, it just takes time and takes patience.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That's a good segue into my comments.
All right.
So, I want to say, I want to encourage everybody to adopt these regulations, and I'm actually proud to be on the planning commission when this was brought up. I'm very happy to see this. I truly believe, and, you know, we don't have 100 people at tonight's meeting, but this is, this is no small piece of legislation. This is extremely important, way more important than anybody that's not in here tonight realizes, in that when you look back in 10 years and you see what Fairhope looks like, a lot of that's going to be due in part to adopting these regulations right now. And they may change over the years. You know, I'm sure that they're going to be massaged a little bit over the next century, but it's a good starting place, and I want to applaud the staff tremendously for this work. I mean, I truly think that this is some of the most important work that you've done.
Thank you.
And I just want to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to, or the Planning Commission to vote in favor of this.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Who is my...
Was that a motion?
I consider that a motion.
I had another comment.
Since I urged the planning commission to approve this, I called that a motion. Well, let me get a second first, and then we can do further discussion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, and then I can have a comment.
Yeah. Second?
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion.
Yeah, it was a comment in support, I fully support this, and I also think it's very important. But to echo the public comments, and Holly's comments too, I mean, I think, and everyone, whatever, to build on this, I think it's, it's very important to maybe look forward and look at what percentage of green space we want in the total community. And the flip side of that, that's kind of what's the minimum green space that we want, that we're going to protect, what's the floor. The other side is what's the maximum impervious area, which goes along, because it's, the green space is providing hydrological services as well as recreational services and aesthetic services. And so, just to piggyback onto this, I think this is incredibly important and very useful, and I would, I would love to see us, hopefully, have some watershed modeling, where we understand the cumulative impact of all of these subdivisions that we approve, and how much more water is moving through the system, and tied to that, also a scientific basis for what's our maximum impervious area? What can we stand? Or what's our minimum green space? Both, you know, either or. But to set that goal and give us a way, a basis to make all of these decisions.
And there has been some modeling done throughout the county, I'm aware of. I went to a meeting a few months ago, they were going over the modeling that I believe Thompson Engineering did, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, and Richard and I were talking about this today, there has been some, but we don't have a way to look at, this subdivision is putting this much, and we don't regulate quantity. So, even if we are looking at that and we're managing the rate, we're not managing the quantity yet.
And it's important, if you, I mean, we can do all the studies we want to, and all the modeling we want to, but you got to, you got to know how, what is our role, and what do we want to do to make change or try to meet those goals? It takes some efforts to try to, if it's amending our zoning ordinance or whatever it is, you have to understand what plays into that problem of runoff and those kind of things. So, that's something that, we can do all the studies, but we need to make, use them in the proper way to identify our needs, and what we need to do to achieve the goal that's been set.
Well, and if there was a goal for green space, that might be a, you know, maybe that's not the full modeled scientific maximum impervious area, but maybe it's a step in that direction.
Right.
You know, until there's more consensus on that. But I feel like they go hand in hand.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just to address those, your concerns, and Mr. Gober's concerns, and Holly's concern, I want to give you a couple of facts and figures if I can. In a little bit over five years, if you go back to the very end of December 2013, so it's just a little over five years, we have added 148 acres of green space to the city of Fairhope, and we're in the process of adding the recreational facilities of another 40 acres, and I'm not counting the soccer fields, which were developed for recreational purposes as well. So, we're going to be well over 200 acres added in the last five years.
Well, which is, which is laudable and wonderful, but when you say added, from the stormwater perspective, it was probably not concrete before it was protected green space. So, I'm thinking that there are two different ways to think about it. I'm thinking from the stormwater perspective, it probably was pervious before, and it still is, and now it's protected.
True.
Which is great. But having a big-picture goal for that seems really critical, as each of these meetings we approve, you know, 100, 200 more, and these are the homes that are going in front of us, not just the individual homes and buildings that are being built.
Can I make one more comment? I just want to make, you know, we now require pre-application meetings with staff. I want to make, just make sure, make you all know how this is going to be implemented. We will meet, we will meet with the applicants, and we'll discuss the green space and the type of green space. Because there's some cases, and I know we're talking about some of the water courses, there's some cases where we might want to see a particular creek or stream have a lot of green space around that in lieu of green space in other areas, or a mixture of the two. So, we'll be looking at those, and looking at our regulations, and meeting with them, and trying to recommend the proper method of how to handle that. And so, when you, when you see it, it will be something that meets our intended goals.
That's great.
Well, one thing to echo, a little bit of what Jack said, it always bothers me that when we have items like this that we bring up, that we might have somebody speak to that item. When we have a subdivision that people don't like, we have 150 people belligerently talking about everything wrong with it, but then when we come in here, you know, it's just like, and we discuss changes to make them better, nobody participates, and, you know, here you've got Tim and Steve out there, and they're just like, you know, tell us and we'll draw it. You know, they're not uptight one way or the other. They're just saying, tell us.
Yeah.
You know, we'll draw, we'll, you know, you show us the promised land, we'll lead them to it. And it's interesting that, you know, now is the time that people can come in and be talking about buffers or this or that, and instead, they'll wait until there's one subdivision they don't like, and they're against it because of density, traffic, property values, and water runoff, and...
And all of this is being...
How many times do you hear that? But anyway, I've got a motion and a second to approve the new green space requirements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, we're skipping the next item on the agenda, the watermark, and we are moving forward, if I am correct, to SD 1906, the Bills Number Two LLC. Sir.
Good evening. So, what I have in front of you tonight is a subdivision approval for the River Horse subdivision. It's a public hearing to request, hearing to consider the request of Dewberry Engineers on behalf of Bills Number Two LLC owner and applicant for preliminary plat approval of River Horse subdivision, a 25-lot major subdivision. Property is located a quarter mile north of Gayford Avenue, on the east side of Blueberry Lane, just on the north side of the North Station subdivision. The property is 22 acres. The smallest lot that's proposed is 11,200 square feet. Largest lot is 16,946 square feet. The subdivision is going to connect to an existing stubout street in North Station, and also to Blueberry Lane. On the screen there, you have on the left is a zoning map showing where the property is located. Blueberry Lane is just on the west side there, and then on the right side, you can see on the aerial that a lot of the site on the north and on the east side is surrounded by woods, and it actually is wetlands there. Next is just a photograph of the view looking at the entrance from North Station, where that existing stubout street currently is, where it'll be connecting to. The strip generation did not trigger the need for a traffic study on this particular Up there is just an image to kind of give you a view of what the streets, the lighting, and pedestrian circulation is going to be. All the sidewalks met the appropriate credentials, and there's a 30-foot buffer that is shown on the, around all the buffer area on the north, so kind of where we're just discussing the buffer zones and green space. This site does a good job of kind of protecting the wetland as much as possible there.
Is that a 30-foot buffer around the cul-de-sac, around that curve? That's a 30-foot strip?
Along, along the wetlands.
On the right, yes, in between the development and the wetlands.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And this image here is, kind of shows you where the green space is, and right now, the green space accounts for 31.7% of the development, and it more than triples the 10% that is required per Article 5, Section C, Point 2. Paul Merchant, the city of Fairhope's horticulturist, has approved the landscaping plan. Tree protection plan was not needed for this particular site. The site was bare of trees, except for what was located in the wetland area, is therefore already protected, and we did receive a letter from the engineer of record stating that. Just a quick view of the site data table, just kind of giving you a review of some of the information I've already given you. 25 lots. A big thing I wanted to highlight is, again, this shows that it's a 36% density that has been corrected, whereas there's a 31.7% that I showed you before, and the density for this neighborhood is 1.14. The LID techniques that are going to be utilized to provide the 80% or more TSS removal is there's vegetated grass buffer, which provides 84% TSS removal. There's a wet basin, which is located on the bottom right-hand of the subdivision there, and that provides 80% TSS removal as well. And there's a grass wells that are being used that provide the 80% TSS removal. The site's post-development discharge is less than the pre-development outflow, which is one of the big things that we look at to make sure that the water that's coming into the site, as it leaves, is actually cleaner and going at a less velocity than it was before there was any development.
So, is that, that's, when you say the post-development discharge, is that rate, or is that solids, or is that in terms of quality or rate?
Both.
Okay.
Traffic common devices have been added. The length of Calibrae Street did exceed 660 feet, which is kind of our maximum block length without having the type of device. The developers added some common devices in there to do that. And like I said, the north and east side are surrounded by wetlands, and appropriate 30-foot buffer has been applied, and the proper signage will be provided for that. Staff recommends approval of SD 19.06 for the River Horse subdivision as it's presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
There are four conditions, a couple of them that...
Yeah, the conditions that were in your package have already been resubmitted by the engineer, and have been rereviewed, and it's a satisfactory for approval. They've been taken off.
Any questions for staff? The river. I'll go ahead, and does anybody here wish to speak on behalf of the developer? Do you want me to open the case of public hearings? I don't think there's any public to be heard.
Yeah, I don't know where they're at. You mentioned that a while ago.
I'll go ahead, I will open the public hearing at this time. I will close the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Dewberry? Yes, sir. You are...
I've never lived that down, Willie. Thank you, Holly.
I'm going to get you a T-shirt.
I wore my jacket, some weird name on there.
This is not overly dense for an R2 subdivision, as at 1.4 lots per acre, I was noticing.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
I was just commenting, I said, this is not very dense for a, for a R2 subdivision at just 1.4...
Right.
...lots per acre. I'm just commenting, complimenting that that's a very low-density R2 subdivision.
Right. And, of course, we submitted this before you just approved these green space regs, but we've already met with Wayne on our next project that, and had our first pre-op meeting on, under the new system, and he's given me the new regs. But even on this site, we have a fairly excessive amount of green space, just because the way the property was, just wasn't able to develop it out like we normally do, pack them in like many of the developers do. That happens sometimes, in this case.
That's all being nice.
Yeah, well, it just worked out where we've got a considerable amount of green space, being that this property is open. When I say open, in the upland areas, it's basically non-forested, there are no trees there. So, this particular developer, you're quite familiar with, 68 Ventures, has done quite a few developments, and those green spaces will be nice lawns. So, I think even in this project, even though it's come in prior to your green space awards you just approved, this will fit nicely into that. This project, and actually your next project, are by the same owner and developer. It would have been nice if we could have just done it in one swoop, but there's a wetland body between the two, so it basically broke the project up. So that's why you've got two different projects tonight. But it's going to be a mirror image almost, because it'll be looking right across the wetlands to the other one on the next, on the next one. But if you've got any questions about this one, I'll be glad to.
Yeah, can you just explain how the detention in Area Three works? Does it just the outfall? Does it, does it have a point of runoff, or does it, how does it, how does the water go from there into the wetlands?
That's a good question. I don't know that I can, unless Richard can remember from his design on it, but I don't know. The discharge from that. I can't remember if it's a point discharge or if it's a, it probably is. I'm almost certain there's a, there's a point discharge to the south, to the, to that wetlands. And of course, we're having to get a permit to cross the, the wetlands there from North Station into the development. Yeah. Right.
We're just in that space, anything y'all can do to fan the water out, you know, rather than having one blow point, it's always good going into the wetlands.
Yes.
Rather than create a stream or, you know, blow an area out. I don't know how much water will be discharged right through there, how much of it comes. It looks like the water goes off on all directions and maybe going on a sheet flow, but if there is a point discharge, the more y'all can fan that out and not, you know, blow a stream through the wetlands would be great.
For the most part, yeah, the water discourses mostly even across the property. When it does discharge from that pond, when it enters into the wetlands across that, where that drive is going to be going into, there's another depression and another little holding area base that is still inside the wet, natural wetlands. And then that actually, we'll see in the next case coming up, water from there actually ends up onto the next property, and then is treated again before it's discharged a second time from there. But almost three different points of injury for, between the two projects.
Any other questions? Comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD 19.06, River Horse Subdivision. I recommend that we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Right, next item on the agenda, SD 1907, Tracery.
So the next item we have tonight is SD 1907, the Tracery subdivision. It's a public hearing to consider the request of Dewberry Engineers Incorporated on behalf of Bills Number Two LLC owner and applicant for the preliminary plat approval of Tracery subdivision, a 43 lot major, major subdivision. This property is located a quarter mile north of Gaffer Avenue on the west side of Lawrence Road, and is actually adjacent to the previous case. Subject property is approximately 32 acres with the smallest lot, 11,528 square feet, and the largest lot, 23,105 square feet. Average lot size of just under 13,000 square feet. This subdivision will have access from Lawrence Road. The aerials will probably look pretty familiar to you. On the left side again is the zoning map, and on the right is the aerial photograph. And again, you have on this site, you have wetlands on the west side and north side of the property. This is a view looking from Lawrence Road towards the subject property, and again, similar to the first property, is barren of trees except for where the wetland area is, which is already going to be protected. Trip generation did not trigger the need for a traffic study for this case. And then on the screen is another image of the sidewalks and pedestrian circulation and street lighting, kind of showing there's the same 30-foot buffer that is along the wetlands with this detention pond is just on the north side of the subdivision up there. And there's also in the middle of the wetlands there on the west side is, inside the wetlands is a natural basin that's there that catches a lot of the water. When I get to the, to another future slide here in just a second, it'll actually show you where the water coming off that side is all in the calculations, on the drainage calculations. The green space for this accounts for 22.7 of the development, which more than doubles the 10% that is currently required. Like as I said, the north and west side that's surrounded by wetlands has the appropriate 30-foot buffer and proper signage will be provided. Paul Merchant, again, City of Fairhope's Horticulturist, has approved the landscaping plan, and the tree protection plan was not needed, being that the site was bare of trees except it was in the wetland area, and a letter from the engineer was provided stating that. The site data table there, again, was some of the general, generic information that we typically have. A big thing we wanted to point out was the open space is 7.49 square feet, and the density for this subdivision is 1.35. The four LID techniques that are going to be utilized on this site to give us the 80% or more TSS removal, is the invegetated grass buffer, which counts for 84%. A wet basin that is onsite that'll do 80%, a wet basin that's off-site that'll treat the water and provide an 80% TSS removal. And then there's also a grass wells that's included in the wet basins that'll provide an 80%. And that's what I was talking about, there's water before, that's off-site water before it gets there is going through that wet basin, then onto this property, and then getting into the wet basin that is on property before it is getting discharged out. Staff recommends approval for SD 1907, Tracery subdivision as it's presented. And again, in your packets, there was very similar conditions of approval that have already been addressed prior to the meeting by the engineers, and has been reviewed by staff, and has been approved. Be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
I do. This, this one really vexes me with connectivity, and I see the wetlands surrounding it on at least two sides. It's just so darned close to the one we just proposed, and so darned close to, you know, phase one. There's, there's just too much wetlands in there to connect.
Yes, sir. Staff believed that with the wetlands already crossing through North Station, there was already that current stubout street that was there, so they were able to utilize that. And where I was sitting, we're talking about the extra wet basin that's already in the wetland area is right, is right in the middle of, of that wetland area where those two subdivisions are. So it would be some major wetland work and major, you know, not destruction, but just alteration to the wetlands that would have to have been done in that area.
Probably destruction.
To, to connect those two neighborhoods together. That was one of the first things, one of the first things that I looked at, seeing that the sites were next to each other and being two separate ones. And I'm sure.
What?
But they're going through the wetlands on, on the prior one for just a small distance.
Correct. Where it's connected to North Station.
And this one couldn't do the same?
No, sir.
Why is that?
Connect.
That's the low point in between.
That's in, in between the two sites was a major low point where there's already pre-existing almost a wet basin in the natural wetland area as it is. So going through that would have disturbed that wet basin, trying to construct a road going through there would have had, you know, more serious disadvantages than the, having connectivity, staff believed, instead of making a road through there.
Yeah, likely, you might have to bridge it, or, or worse, put a culvert in, which would do more damage to the wetland than I believe.
We're bridging it would be great if they were able, but it's expensive.
Still got major operation of wetlands when you put, even put a bridge in.
Even the bridge with the construction.
Kind of using the balancing test, I think we felt like that, that, that alteration that maybe needed outweighed the connectivity issue.
Yeah, not enough sugar for a diet.
And again, on the other one, there was a stubout that was already, they had done half the work to get to that point on the North Station side. So it was a lot more logical to go ahead and connect to it instead of having a stubout street to the back of somebody's house. That was, could then could never go anywhere where there was the intention of the connectivity from North Station.
What do, how do we typically treat, you know, I see the large parcel to the south, you know, and there's one that's been subdivided and one that hasn't. And I don't know, I could see if the large parcels to the south of the subject property were subdivided, that might be an opportunity for connectivity. But how do we treat, you know, possible?
That was, that was actually your jumping on the next question. I was going to ask the same thing to the south. Between lots eight and nine, you've got a 15-foot right of way, which I guess must be utilities right of way. But you've got kind of a checkerboard to the south there. And I don't know what sizes those are, how the people get into some of those. I should have driven out there, and I did on the prior one. I knew, I thought I knew this one better. But, you know, if you look on the, just all this one you have up here, subject property, you know, you've got two long, excuse me, you've got two long lots, and then a couple of shorter ones, and then some kind of connection over here to Lawrence Road. Is that a, of course, I don't know how much of a, you know.
You have in between lots eight.
About connectivity there, if it's still just taking you out to Lawrence Road, it's probably not.
What's the, what's the question? I'm missing something there.
I just wonder if there's any way, over here, like between lots, you know, four, five, or six, to put a stubout in case that land to the south there would get redeveloped, or.
Or eight and nine.
You know, eight, nine has 15 foot.
Where lots four, five, and six are is right in the middle of the couple.
Those are small.
Very small, small lots up there. And I can see where you're saying where there's a, a little drainage easement, common area, 15-foot common area that is between lots eight and nine. That would connect to that larger lot that is there. And I don't have the wetland information report. I'm sure that was.
Well, the middle of it's clear of trees, which makes you think maybe it's not wetlands. And I wonder if we ought to just, you know, get them to put that, that as a 30, wherever that lines up, just for a future connection if ever needed.
But doesn't it appear that halfway down that lot that you're referring to, that looks like another stubout that already comes into there? Then you've got one to Lawrence Road and one down to the south on, on whatever it is. Well, I understand, but that's a, what you've got, what you don't see with that dark black line is you've got a wetland to the left side of that parcel, and you've got one, that's why that piece points up like it does. You've got one on the right side, and the two of them come together and run over to the west side of the subject parcel before it goes north. So you've still got a wetland there.
On the black line on the south.
That's a wetland right there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add too, just, you know, we, we made some amendments tonight. One thing that I would suggest we look at is connectivity. Our language in our subregs is very general. It just, it really, it's really a general statement about connectivity. I would suggest, and a lot of jurisdictions have this, they have a connectivity index, which really depends, it's, it's an index, a ratio of how many lots you have compared to how many access points you have to roadway. I would suggest.
That'd be excellent.
We'd look at something, I mean, it's, you know, and it's really more for more urbanized areas. This, this is out on the fringes. But that's something that would provide some definitive type, you know, connectivity indexes or connectivity points we need. And if you can't do that, then you explain why, and then the commission can judge that and on its merits, whether it's appropriate or not. But that's something we may want to look at in the future. It may help us on some of these issues.
Well, you just, you just hit on one just, just a minute ago, like that, in terms of, of where your, your catch basin, for natural catch basin is, in terms of connectivity between these two sites themselves.
Right.
You know, I mean, you, you're going to have a lot, especially, you know, almost write it down as the gospel, anywhere in the lower coastal plain, whether it's 40 acres or it's 4,000 acres, you're going to have 25% wetlands.
Right.
I mean, it's just a given. And so when, and certainly one of the biggest issues that would supersede, to me, connectivity is protection of your wetlands. I mean, that's, that's the biggest, most important thing, I think, that we can do.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's a direct correlation between the connectivity and the value of the connectivity. It's very dependent upon number of lots. 20 lots doesn't, doesn't need the same connectivity as 60 lots do, and so forth. So I think that's something that if y'all would like us to, we'll, we'll do some research into it and provide some options for you. And, and I think it helps the engineers and designers too, because they know what they're, what they're charged with now. They know that they have to look at this, and if you can't do it, then you explain why, the wetland or what have you. And I think we can make much more educated decisions regarding, you know, what the proper level of connectivity is. And again, it's all about context. You know, it's a context-driven type issue. But y'all should look at what the future context may be, as we talked about earlier, the growth and so forth. So, so we'll, we'll do some research on that and try to bring some, some recommendations back to you in the near future.
Yeah, I would just say I like the idea of pedestrian connectivity versus drainage connectivity versus utility connectivity. I mean, there should be definitions for all of those things. I mean, vehicular access is just one of a number of connectivity issues, I think. And I appreciate you wanting to address it that way.
Are you speaking of like trail connectivity?
Trail.
And green space.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at this particular plat on the west side between lot 14 and 15, there's a 15-foot, what would look to be a pedestrian access easement. And it, and it extends all the way to the west boundary. And then when you look at the west, the east boundary of the one we just approved earlier, it kind of points toward the green space over there. And if there was a pedestrian access across there on that 15-foot, then, you know, if you have kids that are neighbors, and one on one side and one on the other, they got way to, to get to the other friend's house without having to go out on the road and come back around again.
So you're suggesting a boardwalk of some sort to go across there?
Pedestrian access, I think.
Steve, has that.
Well, that 15 feet is a drainage easement. It's not meant to be a pedestrian easement. I know you were asking for that, but.
Then they go right into that pond you're talking about?
What's that?
Then they go right into the, the depression that you were talking about? Catch basin?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to hand out floaties.
It'll be a kid pedestrian easement, for sure, and exploration.
But that's a good point, Richard, in terms of all of the other issues associated with connectivity as, as opposed to vehicular.
We've done pedestrian easements, you know, when we have a number to do vehicular connections. I think of one down near the colony where we did. I guess I'd better go ahead and open the public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time, if anybody wants to speak. In that case, I will close the public hearing. I assume on this one, the staff recommendation items, one through four, have been met, so there are no caveats. Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case number SD 19.07, Tracery, recommend approval.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda, Battles Trace, case SD 1910.
I think everybody's hung over their Super Bowl.
Thank you. This is a request to consider the requests, or a public hearing to consider the request of the Retirement Systems of Alabama for the final plat of Battles Trace Phases A and B, the five A and B. And the property is located on the north side of Battle Road, Battles Road, north of the colony at the Grand. It is 27 acres with the largest lot being 15,185 square feet, and the smallest being 8,125 square feet. This is a final plat, so there's an existing preliminary plat. Everything was built as laid out in the preliminary plat. They are not quite as far along on their final inspection items as, as we would like. They had some road issues, and they submitted a little late for those. But they are in the process of working those out. They've been working with Victor Johnson on a lot of those, so that's where it stands.
All right.
And condition number five has been met.
Okay. Could anybody, do we have anything to add, or?
I was, when we were looking at these pictures, is this come, am I out of turn to have a comment right now?
Let me go, I tell you what, let me just open and close the public hearing since somebody's here, and then we'll just be free to talk among ourselves.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Tim, if you don't mind coming up, I've got a question for you, bud.
Well, yes, we're going through all the, the photos and. Well, yes, we're going through all the photos and see there are some, there were some notes for about construction BMPs not being followed, like the entrance not being rocked, and then there's a view of this damaged tree, and I'm not, I wasn't sure like what context to take.
The damaged tree, the damaged tree was just to show that there were trees out there are having, or this particular tree.
It's previously damaged.
Some issues, you know, this was happened through the.
I'm, I'm not sure why that picture's in here, to be honest, that, that tree's in a common area from Phase Three, and it, it natural damaged probably eight to ten months ago. It, part of it just fell off as old oak trees do. It's not anywhere near an active construction area.
Okay, I didn't know if this was a tree that was protected as part of the.
And the mainly reason I put it in there is just for the awareness, because there was a lot of issues of protecting the trees out of that location, so I just wanted to show that there was some, some natural damage to it.
The only other thing I would like to add, I was just, this is the first time I got my hands on the staff report, the contingency items, like Nancy stated, item five had already been taken care of. Item two, we added that note to the plat as well, unless, unless there's something else that needs to be added, and then also item four, all the utility reports were given to the city at the final inspection. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I have, I have one question, a little slower. I don't think this was answered, there's, there's, the contingencies always throw me a little bit when we're, we're approving things with a whole bunch of contingencies, and one of it, back in, we already talked about roads, you know, typically they require bonding, but the applicant is committed to have the work completed prior to the planning commission meeting, was that finished?
Yeah, the roads were finished as of last Friday. We actually finished most of it the week before, and they were, they were like sixty feet short of paving one lane, and they finished that Friday. And I've got the, the final road test added, I'm gonna get that to Richard tomorrow.
So is there, what is left on that condition number one? What incomplete items are, remain?
Not a whole lot that I'm aware of. One thing that was on there was the street signs, those were actually installed today with, with the lack of, they were one short, they're gonna come back and do that in the morning. The grass is actually starting to come up pretty good out there. I wrote through the slide on the way to the meeting, everything, everything's pretty, pretty much there in my opinion, so we'll be contacting them for a re-inspect here in probably some time this week.
And it's kind of philosophical, but for staff, it's incomplete until we put our eyes on it and sign it all on it, so.
Okay, so you have not, but.
Mr. Chairman, I make very clear, if, if there are conditions that are imposed, they have to get a plat signed.
Right.
First, we won't sign the plat until all the conditions that have been met, so just because we approve it with conditions, trust me, they will have to be met before we sign it, and they can't record it until we sign it, and if we don't, they can't record, they can't sub lots.
Okay, and I won't keep nipping, mostly the one that said it was going to be completed by this meeting, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, and it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I've got a motion.
To approve the phase five, plat of phase five.
I've got a motion to approve Battles Trace Phase Five, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further?
I got one question. Is this well behind the tee box on number ten and back over your right shoulder? Because I want a disclaimer that we're not responsible for any drives that may veer to the right right there.
You're gonna have to work on your drive a little bit then.
I think phase six will be, is that the last phase of six?
Um, no, we'll have, we'll have several more phases coming, but yeah, this, this phase is not anywhere near the golf course, it's, it's to the north of.
It's to the north of where nine was, it was like, the part that was lopped off right there.
Yeah, this is kind of in the northeast corner of the property.
No more, I have no further concerns then.
Just don't hit a ball backwards and you'll be okay.
They changed it to a par three there, aren't they?
Uh, one of those holes they are changing to a par three. Well, I don't know, they keep going back and forth, but now they're, last I heard, they were talking about making it into a par four, so I'm, I'm not sure what they're gonna do, they changed mine.
I thought that was a par three, is what, three hundred and fifty yards?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Do you have any?
Yes.
Old or new?
Very important, old or new business, or new business. Okay, due to the O O M parade, that is Monday, March fourth, we will not be able to get in here. So we were gonna look at moving it to Thursday, but the city council already has this room booked for their meeting. So our next available date is Tuesday, the twelfth. March twelfth, yes.
Something to be made in the motion?
Sure, I mean, we've adopted a schedule already of agenda schedule, so we would need to amend it, so yes, please.
I've got a motion, do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? All right.
Thank you.
I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I would, I would love, Wayne and I talked a little bit about it, maybe getting if we could do it local without, we're talking about a hardcore schooling, but just some, some guidance and some philosophical lectures about zoning, planning and zoning that we might get done here that would be convenient, not on a real long, all-day, tenuous type of thing, but.
You're talking like a morning?
Yeah.
A few hours in the morning?
Yeah, a few hours in the morning, a couple hours in the morning, just, just kind of get some.
Yeah, previously, other places I've been, we, we would invite someone in to speak to the planning commission and somebody who's experienced Alabama law and Alabama, you know, procedures with planning and all, coming to give a little, like we did, we did it several times with the county and just.
We did it at county, yeah.
Kind of give a primer on, on some of the, you know, and the laws are changing too, actually, there's been some different laws, I mean, different legislations that have been passed over the years that changes a little bit, but if y'all are interested, we can certainly put that together and have a little work session, workshop.
Sure.
Y'all wanna do, y'all wanna do it.
Absolutely.
Nancy and I went to a class that was down in the beach that was like.
I got a certification.
We got a certification.
Was it down on the beach?
Yeah, you missed it, it was, it's one of the, it's a police station, I think.
If we, if we had someone come in, we'd probably tailor it a little bit to some of the issues we deal with, maybe have, you know, come and speak about some of the issues we deal with fairly frequently and some things like that, so we would, I'd be glad to try to put that together.
Excellent, I think with those two, one thing that's real important is, you know, if you haven't read the subdivision regs, read them, and if you haven't read the zoning ordinance, is read them. I mean, don't be asking, you know, Wayne to explain them, read them, and if you have any questions or concerns, you know, make suggestions that we change them, you know, and before we have meetings like this, whatever that meeting happens to be about, you know, you need to read that section of the ordinance or the subdivision reg prior to, so that you know, you know, where the city is at that point, so you can ask, you know, questions and, and, you know, we can make the changes, because one thing that I've learned is, you know, it seems like every change that we make, it's a double-edged sword, that, you know, you cure one issue and then you cause another issue, so it's not always as simple as you think it is.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations are available online, you can download them, you can look at them online, and also the zoning map viewer is on, is online, so if you want to look at a piece of property, the parcel ID numbers are giving, are given in the, in the agenda, and you can look at those and see what's surrounding it, and also there's a tool, you can also look at the aerial photography that's around there if you want, I mean, we put them in our staff report, but if you want to do, really zoom in and look at them, you can do that, and if you, really, really creative, you can go to the revenue commission's website, put in the same parcel number, and you can look at topography and, and all those kind of things, there's a lot more information out there.
Normally, before the meetings, I look at the tax map and the regular map, and then I walk the property, and I did not tonight, as you could tell when I was asking the questions on the black line, and, you know, you can tell when, when you're prepared and tell when I'm not prepared, so I do apologize for that this month.
I couldn't find that black line out there.
Look for it, look for it.
When we, when we, just while I'm thinking about it, when we do get together and do that class, I would like to talk about impact fees and maybe, and some things that maybe we might need to talk about being more forward and progressive as we grow.
Sure, well, the, the, the impact fees is a local, local act that we fall under, so we have certain requirements for impact fees that we must adhere to. I will tell you that you have to do studies every so often, we just completed our study for impact fees, and so that we just amended that.
Is it a local or a state thing, it can't be something well.
There may be other funding mechanisms, so.
Yeah, so, so impact fees, you know, I guess around two thousand and four or so, then Senator Byrne in the state legislature, he authored the impact fee legislation and had it passed as a local act for Baldwin County. I think currently, there's only three cities that collect impact fees, it's Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, and Fairhope. But there are certain requirements in those impact fees, we're limited to one percent of the value of the property, so when Eric Cortinez, when they come in for a building permit, he collects one percent from, from them, it goes into impact fee account, and that money is utilized for various things, I think we just utilize some to buy some of the park property, I believe, Councilman Varell. But, but it's limited to, you know, again, what I think we've chosen to use it for parks, for police, I believe fire, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that, and I just want to encourage office citizens, that, that's more of a city council-type decision. You know, if the planning commission wants to make a recommendation, you know, we're all ears, but if you want to be heard on that, you know.
I'm thinking about as far as these big massive developments and how they are impacting us, what are they giving us if we're, if we're getting impacted, not working out our infrastructure or schools, those kind of things, I feel like sometimes when you pay to play, you gotta pay it up.
Right.
They're paying a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're looking at a house that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're paying one percent of that into this impact fee. Now, schools is a little different, because schools are multi-jurisdictional, our impact fees are only for the city, so we're really, it's, that's a little more difficult issue for the school issue.
I do want to add, the impact fee does max out at four thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars for a single-family residence.
Well, one thing I was gonna mention, if we have these meetings and they're gonna discuss the subdivision regs, you know, that's fine, I'd still love for as many city council people to be here as possible since they rotate on and off, but if it has anything to do with ordinances, we really need to have the city council here as well.
We'll be glad to try to get a date that fits everybody's schedule and, and provide some, some good training.
Jack, is this your last meeting?
Yes, and I was gonna say it was a pleasure serving with all of you and the staff.
Thank you for your time and your.
I mean, it's been a very productive nine months, and I know I missed a couple of meetings, and I'm sorry about that, but it's been a pleasure serving with all of you, and you're all professional and ask a lot of questions and a lot of really good questions, I've enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.